Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our City Council meeting. It's April 20th, 2022. We will start with invocation with Pastor Michael Neversen from the First Baptist Church.
Good evening, everyone. Let's all bow our heads and just humble our hearts. Oh heavenly Father, Lord, we just want to say thank you as you allow us to come together to handle the affairs of this wonderful city, Lord. I just pray that you continue to be with each one of the officials and help them to make the decisions that need to be done, continue to go on forth in a manner that is pleasing unto you and according to your will. Lord, those that are in the audience, Lord, allow them to be of humble minds and be able to speak their minds freely, but also do it in a manner that is pleasing unto you as well. Continue to bless each and every one that is here tonight and those that have a desire to be here. In these things, we lift up in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much. Now, we will ask Police Chief Reasy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but first, we must call a meeting to order at 6:01.
To the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Ms. Melanie? Here. We have a quorum. Item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Lambert?
I'll make the motion to the consideration to approve the agenda, please.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
A motion by Mayor Portem Lambert, seconded by Councilmember Jones, to approve the agenda as submitted. Discussion, Mr. Lamis?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carried. Agenda has been approved. Next, we go to the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. When you come to the podium, please state your name and city of residence. At this time too, I'd like to remind everyone to silence your cell phones. Would anyone like to speak in the public forum? Oh. Oh, what? Oh, sorry. Okay, there we go. The old system used to be able to kill our own.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Banos. I'm up here to talk about on your consent agenda, item H, for reauthorizing remote telecommunications. I thought it was because of COVID, so I did contact the Merced County Public Health Department and also our local hospital. Found out that there's 141 active cases, 35 of those are kids. When I mentioned that my city wanted to go back to virtual, they said, "Well, why? Nobody else is." And I went, "Okay, well, that's your opinion. I'm just getting information." The hospital has 40 beds, 14 of them are taken or being used. They couldn't tell me how many of them were COVID cases, but their ICU was empty at this time. And that was information I got this morning. So, I don't know if that's the reason why you want to go virtual. The only thing I can gather is that, from talk I've heard, is that some people can't make the meetings. And it's my opinion that if you are part of what's up on the dais, you should be able to make those meetings. We've already changed the time to make it more convenient for, I'm assuming, the people up there on the dais, because I know it's not convenient for the public itself, that that should be, it should have been left at 7 o'clock so our commuters could come and talk. So, I'm hoping that you pull it and talk about it and explain probably more clearly to me and to others why you want to keep this as a virtual thing. It shouldn't be. It is the public being able to come. And just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in the public forum?
Hello, my name is Claudia Nunez. I live at the Mobile Home Park on Pacheco. And the reason we are here is due to the city allowing the homeless to live in the field that's next to our Mobile Home Park. The reason we don't like it is because we've had a lot of stuff being stolen from us. I have lived there 20 years. I never had anything stolen before. Now, because they're there, we have bikes being stolen. A friend of mine, his wheelchair got stolen. They are always in the park. They don't listen. I have heard, I live right next, there's one big tree in the park. I have heard the, some of the homeless, there's a bunch of kids that live in the park and they play on the little streets, of course, they're kids. I have heard some of the homeless saying, "Hi there, little boy. You sure are beautiful. Come over here." They'll tell the little girls also, "If you guys have kids, I'm sure you wouldn't want some person to be calling them like that." I was molested as a baby, as a little girl. I know what it feels like to grow up with that on you, and I don't want that on any of the kids that live there. And last year, I brought a letter to City Hall telling them about all the stuff going on, and I wanted to come to the meeting, and I was told at the front desk where I gave them the letter, that I was not allowed to come to the meeting. If you guys are here serving us, why can't we come and hear what's going on? Okay. Also, on the 18th of this month, at 8:57, is it all right if I read what I wrote? I wrote some stuff that happened that night. I called 911. It was at 8:57. I called 911 because right in front of my house, they started a big fire. If those ashes fly to the mobile homes, a lot of us are going to lose our homes. Okay? And they had the music on as loud as it would go. A lot of our people go to work. They can't be staying awake all night because the homeless by the city are being allowed to live there, and they don't listen to the rules. So, I called 911 and I told them, and the lady told me that they would send out an officer. I stood outside on my ledge, waiting more than an hour. No police officer ever showed up. But it was at 8:59. All of a sudden, two minutes after I had hung up with 911, the fire went out, the music was turned off. What happened? Coincidence that they turned all the stuff off? No. Somebody at the police station is snitching to them. And the same thing happened to me last year. When I went home one night, because I had been calling the police department to let them know what was going on, when I got out of my vehicle in front of my house, the homeless were sitting there with the fire, and they said, "Hi there, Claudia. How are you?" How are they going to know my name? I had just talked to 911. They're the only ones that had my name. And yet, the homeless knew my name? It's, we need help. We've, we're, we've told people that we thought would care, but nobody cares what we're going through. There's so many disabled people that live in that Mobile Home Park. If something happens, they can't defend themselves. We need your help. That's why we're here, because we are tired of talking and talking and talking, and nobody listens to us. Nobody listens to us. And like my son goes to work at different hours of the day. Sometimes he goes to work at 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. He can't sleep because the music's on. And the police, when they do go out there, what they do is over there by the orchard on Way Barb, they go straight through. They don't stop to tell anybody, "Turn the music off." Nothing. They just go straight through. I don't call that service to us. They're just trying to shine us on or sweep us under the carpet, and we don't go under the carpet easily.
Thank you. Your time is up. I have to, I have to cut your time off there. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shandra Lewis, and I am a resident of Los Banos. I live in the Mobile Home Park. I've been there for 43 years. It's always been a very quiet, peaceful place. It has been a terror since 2020, beginning of 2020. They, homing them back there would not be a problem if they were supervised, but they are not supervised. They have free will to do whatever they want, and it is all things that are against the law. Every one of them is a thief, because if you go back there, every one of them has a stolen cart. And if they've just stolen a cart, they're a thief. They steal our bicycles. A gentleman, elderly gentleman, has a three-wheel trike, and that's how he gets around to, in the Mobile Home Park. They stole it. We've had gentlemen come in, if you want to call him a gentleman, and overdosed, and the fire department had to come in and issue him Narcan to wake him up. This is what we are looking at. We have heard a woman being beat all the time, and nothing gets done. One of our residents heard one woman getting raped. Nothing has been done. Now, she didn't report it, but the woman was gone the next day. So, this is the things that we're enduring. They're cutting our fence, and they're coming in, they're stealing from us. They go through our garbage, they go through our recycles. They, I have, I am 65 years old. The manager is almost 83, and we have to deal with these men and women that come in the park. And at 65 and 83, I'm in danger. I fear for my life, but it is my job to take care of the residents. And this 83-year-old woman walks the park at 2:00 a.m. in the morning, and she encounters them. This is not safe for us. This is, you have put us in jeopardy. You have put my life in jeopardy by allowing them to be there. They cut the fence, they come through, they have no respect. They tag our fences, they tag our property, and I am so sorry that you guys don't want to, I know it's a problem, but the problem shouldn't be put on us to endure. You wouldn't want your wife, your daughters, your sons to endure what we go through, and this has been unbearable. We have music, we, we call, and we have a drummer now that will play forever and just pound it, and everybody in the park can hear it. It's not just the back row can hear this drummer. We all hear him. We, and you can't keep them out. We have that really high wall, the brick wall. They throw ropes over and like with a grappling type, anything that they can make, and then they climb over. They'll stack our trash cans up against the wall, and then, because they're so high, they don't care if they fall off, and they jump up on these two trash cans and jump to the top to get away. This is what we are enduring. Why should we endure that? Why should we endure it? I believe, my thoughts of what we should do with the homeless is irrelevant, but I should not have to fear for my life, and I do fear for my life going out at, when a tenant calls me or Sharon in the middle of the night to, for other reasons, I should not have to fear when I'm going to another mobile home to talk to that resident that I would be in danger going there. I feel like I'm going to have to do something to protect myself, and then that puts me in a place where I could possibly harm somebody if I'm being threatened and I want to, and I want to protect myself. But I thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate that you've allowed me to speak.
Thank you.
I've been manager of Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park for 27 years.
Could you please state your name and city of residence?
And I have never.
Excuse me, could you please state your name and city of residence?
Say your name and city of residence. And say your name and.
My name is Sharon Gray, and I live.
In Los Banos?
What?
Los Banos.
In Los Banos. And I manage Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park, 2151 East Pacheco Boulevard. I've done it for 27 years, and I have never had the problems that I have now because of the homeless. Now, they get everything free, they get, they have no respect for property, they have many times damaged our fence, which we had to repair. They have climbed the wall to our bullpen and siphoned gas out of the cars that are in there. This is not fair to my tenants, who are hardworking people. We keep them, we try and keep it as, mobile homes as neat as possible, and children can't play outside hardly because of these men climbing over the fence. So, all I'm going to say is, I want them gone. I'm sorry, but the people that feel sorry for them, then let them stay with them and see how it goes. Okay? The reason I've been manager for 27 years is because they can't find anybody mean enough to take over. And I'm getting meaner.
Thank you very much.
I'm Martha Turner. I'm a resident of Los Banos. I too live in the Mobile Home Park. Our Mobile Home Park is a little community. It's not just a mobile home park, it's a community. And once again, you've moved them in there and they're wreaking havoc. Every night, they, they make big fires, and they're putting paint cans in there, and you hear explosions. Now, they've resorted to propane tanks. And the other morning, at 10:00 a.m., my whole home shook because they blew up a propane tank. And someone's going to get hurt. Someone in the park's going to get their house set on fire, and something has to be done. A week ago, I looked out my window, and there's a homeless man in my neighbor's yard, and he's looking around in his yard. And he proceeded to come in my yard and try and take my granddaughter's bike. And my husband went out on the porch, and he's in his 80s, and told the guy to leave, and the guy just looked at him and dazed and confused because he's drugged up. I'm 70. We can't fend off these drug, drug-addicted people. Not long ago, a homeless man walked in my back door and came into my kitchen. And when he seen me, he turned around and just nonchalantly walked back out. So, I have to keep my doors locked all times now because I'm scared. They're just walking in your house now. The manager, the owner, and the assistant manager, they work tirelessly, day and night, to keep order in that park so the tenants that live there can feel safe. But we're not safe no more. We're not safe no more. That someone out there has a vehicle, and all night long, they're spinning Brody's, spinning their tires. Loud music, they're fighting, the profanity. It can't, it can't continue. I've lived there 22 years in August, raised four kids there because it was safe, and it's not safe no more. All this brings me to asking you two questions. Who elected you? Who hired you? We did. Who pays your salaries? We do. And FYI to all of you, your jobs are on the line, because when your term's up, we'll replace you. We'll fire you and get somebody in here that will do their job and help us. This is not our problem. It's your problem. We're all in danger now. And this isn't the first time. And we're not having it no more. We want results, and we want them right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I say something really quick?
I know you, unfortunately, you have your five minutes.
Yeah.
Unless someone else wants to speak. Let me reset this timer here, and there we are.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and everyone else in the room. My name is Maria Salinas, and I live at the Rancho Los Baños Mobile Home Park. I'm fairly new to the park, and my experience as a resident has been mostly positive. My mobile home is a few yards from the homeless encampment, so it has been a challenge to have to put up with the problems that the homeless bring to our Mobile Home Park. Among a long list of problems, I will share two main issues that are a big concern to me. Number one, the noise is out of control. The homeless people play their music very loud at night, and until 2 or 3 o'clock in the morning, sometimes it's nonstop. And there's a certain drummer boy who plays the drums day and night, every day. And this has, it has to stop. I feel sorry for my neighbors that have to get up very early in the morning to go to work. I'm sure they wake up super tired because they're only getting a couple of hours of sleep. In addition to the music and drums, they are, they are also very rowdy. I often hear them arguing and using a lot of profanity. My second issue is, safety is a very big concern. I go out for a walk early every morning, and I've seen used syringes that they throw to our side of the fence. They also throw their trash over the fence, and the whole back fenced area smells of urine and feces. Our kids play around that area, and they have easy access to the syringes and the trash. Urine and feces creates a very unsanitary, creates very unsanitary conditions for us. So, shame on the person or people who decided to house the homeless encampment right across our fence. How dare you make such a decision without talking to us? All of a sudden, they, they're there, they've been there for two years, I believe. Clearly, you feel like we don't matter. So, you are hearing from us tonight, and maybe at every, every City Council meeting and in bigger numbers, until you relocate the homeless encampment far away from our Mobile Home Park. I was going to stop here, but I guess my time isn't up. So, I just want to know, what is it going to take? What will it take for you to relocate them? Is it going to be after our kids get infected with hepatitis or maybe AIDS if they come in contact with the syringes? They're kids, and they don't know the danger. Our kids matter to us, and we don't want to see them get hurt or, God forbid, maybe get raped or killed by those hoodlums. We ask you to be proactive rather than taking action after something terrible happens. We're very tired. We're very concerned, and we're scared, and we ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in the public forum? Sir?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here, and I'm sure you guys have heard all.
I'm here and I'm sure you guys have heard all the complaints and everything.
Sir, could you please state your name?
My name is John Cornell. I live at 2151 East Pechiko Boulevard, Space 18. And the manager's right, it's like a little community. I've watched children, including my own grandson, grow, grow up there. And it's only been the last couple of years that I don't even, and I live clear up front, but I, I donate a lot of time over there trying to keep the place picked up and orderly. You know, and, and we all do what we can do. I don't, I don't hate homelessness. I've been there. I have been there. And, and thank God, I'm not now. But myself, pretty much everybody in this room right now is just a step away from homeless anyway. But what I, what I was, what I'm asking for is, I know that to make a complete move of these people someplace is, is, is going to be really, 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 really hard. But there's a couple of places around our trailer park, for, you know, like a couple of lots down, that are wide open, just, they're open. There's a big water tower standing right there. Why couldn't we, why couldn't, couldn't we move them over there? Put up a temporary fence or something? And I understand that the county's got a lot of programs for these people. If I was running one of those programs or employed by them stuff, I wouldn't want to be running up and down, walking through, excuse my language, you know, just nasty stuff. I had a bag full of syringes I was going to bring tonight and I felt kind of stupid, so I didn't, but. It's not just the kids, you know, people got little animals, little, little guys. You know, but to them, that's their life. And what's the first thing a dog does when it goes outside? It sniffs and goes, right? Okay, well, that's what we always find is syringes. What if these days someone's dog is going to step on one? Or a kid? You know, it's, it's not just that. I've seen them, I've, I've seen some pretty crude stuff. You know, and, and, and I damn sure wouldn't want to be in your folks' shoes at all. You know, I don't, I realize you guys are doing the best you can, but can't we, can't we just try and come up with something where we can move them just, just enough that, that, because you see where they're located is, is, is only like maybe 100 yards to walk all the way down to Pechiko Boulevard. A measly 100 yards. Why do they have to keep continually cutting fences, throwing bikes up over the barbed wire? You know, blankets and all that stuff. If you guys watch movies, you see how they do it. You know, it's, it's, but it's for real. It's, it's not a movie. And I'm concerned about it because I've, I've got a couple of nephews that live way in the back, back there. And I've got some friends here. I'm pretty much friends with everybody in the park. And also I'm asking for is maybe we all can get together and come up with a place that's not so far away to move them, maybe even like over by that water tower or something. But it's away from, it's not far enough away from the stores or anything of that nature that they don't already have access to. You know, the cutting of the fences and stuff when they only got to walk 100 yards? You know, excuse my language, you guys, but it's bullshit. You know, and, and like I say, I'm not down on a homeless and it only takes one bad apple to ruin it for everybody. And I realize that. But how do you pick the red apple?
We have 20 seconds, sir.
Okay. Well, I've said what I got to say and, and I think that if we work together, we, we could relocate them with no problem.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak in public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and members of the public. I'm Darlene Ingersoll, serving as your Merced County Register of Voters. It is a pleasure to share information with the community this evening. Merced County is now a Voters' Choice Act county, commonly known as acronym VCA. This new election model allows voters to choose how, when, and where to cast their ballot. All active registered voters are mailed a vote-by-mail ballot by 29 days prior to Election Day. And voting assistance centers are established in place of traditional polling places. Voters choose to cast their ballot by mail, which can be returned postage-free by secure official drop-off boxes at our elections office or at any voting assistance center in Merced County. And of course, you can vote in person at any center in Merced County. Voting assistance centers provide a high level of service. For the upcoming June 7, 2022 statewide direct primary election, Merced County will have 13 voting assistance centers. Three of those being 11-day centers open beginning Saturday, May 28 through Election Day, which is June 7. And 10 more four-day centers open on Saturday, June 4 through Election Day. This year, our 11-day voting assistance centers are located at Atwater Community Center, Los Banos Community Center, Merced Community College at the Public Safety Complex. Here in the city of Los Banos, again, the Los Banos Community Center will be an 11-day center. And a four-day center will be at College Greens Park Scripps Building. There will be 10 secure official ballot drop-off boxes in addition to the County Administration Building in Merced. On M Street, all six City Hall offices, including this office, City of Los Banos City Hall, will have an official drop-off box. We are partnering this year with local businesses, Rancho Sem Miguel in Merced, Liberty Market in Delhi, and Rayleigh's in Merced. In fact, Rayleigh's is partnering with all county election offices throughout California. In addition, all Merced County voters need to be aware there may be redistricting impacts on their June 7 ballot. And they may see a change in their districts, including Congressional District, which is now District 13, Board of Equalization, now District 1, State Senate District, now District 4 and District 14, State Assembly District, District 22 and District 27. And your county supervisor district may have changed. Please contact our office for any information, questions. We are located at the County Administration Building, 222 M Street. Our website is www.mercedelections, that's plural, dot org, so mercedelections.org. Our phone number is 209-385-7541. Again, that's 385-7541. We do have a toll-free number, which is 1-800-561-0619. Or you can email us at elections@countyofmerced.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to the public forum? Seeing no one, I will close the public forum. Remind the public that no action can be taken on items in public forum, but your words are heard and will be examined by staff and council. Next, we'll move on to item 6, consideration of approval of consent agenda. And for this, we'll go to City Clerk Maloney.
The consent agenda is filed for numbers 232013 through 232120 in the amount of $475,037.20. Minutes for the April 6, 2022 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6482, accepting the grant deed and dedication from Stonefield Home, Inc., a California corporation, to the City of Los Banos for a portion of Ward Road near Luna Court, consisting of approximately 1.43 plus or minus acres as a portion of Assessor Parcel Number 073220017. City Council Resolution Number 6483, accepting a grant deed and easement deed dedication from Century Communities of California LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, to the City of Los Banos for a portion of San Luis Street near Place Road, Assessor Parcel Number 428370011 through 428370019. City Council Resolution Number 6484, accepting public improvements for South Point at Regency Park, Phase 4, Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6485, accepting public improvements for South Point at Regency Park, Phase 5, Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6486, accepting public improvements for South Point at Regency Park, Phase 6, Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6487, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Banos pursuant to provisions of AB 361. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you very much. Would any council member like to pull any items for discussion or a separate vote? Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 6H.
H. Mr. Yamas?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull out item 8. Oops, I'm sorry, I'm going to hit on myself again. No items in, I'm sorry.
All right. Very good. So, so item 6H. Ms. Lewis, did you want that as a, as a separate vote or discussion only?
Probably should have a separate vote on this and discussion. Thank you.
Okay. So let's go to that item now. Item 6H. And that item is handled by City Attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, members of the public. This resolution came before you approximately a month ago. And due to lack of majority vote, the vote ended up 2-2, a tie, which allows for the item to be brought back for further consideration. Mrs. Lewis has requested that the matter be brought back for further consideration. Just a comment to, one of the comments that was made at the public forum, I would direct your attention to the conclusion of the staff report. And the staff report indicates even though all of the criteria can be met to adopt this resolution, which is the state of emergency still in effect in the state of California declared by Governor Newsom, as well as Cal OSHA regulations that have jurisdiction over the city workplace, that are recommending social distancing. The criteria to adopt this resolution is in place. I will note, though, that the fact that this may, if this, if this resolution is adopted tonight, that doesn't mean that you have to go back to remote teleconferencing for your meetings. It means that you have the ability to do so if you choose, should circumstances warrant it due to a response to uptick in COVID. Keep in mind that AB 361, the purpose of allowing for remote teleconferencing, which is an exception to the Brown Act, which requires in-person meetings, is due to COVID-19 concerns. Currently, you're meeting in person. The concern is at a level where I believe the City Council feels comfortable meeting in person. Having this resolution adopted will allow the city to pivot should COVID-19 and the pandemic take a turn for the worse or some, some, in, some incident occurred due to COVID-19 where it's necessary to go back to remote teleconferencing. This has to be, this resolution has to be considered every 30 days. And the, actually, the legislation terminates at the end of 2023. Excuse me, I believe it's the end of this year. And so we're bringing it back to you with the understanding that it does not mandate that you go back to remote, remote and virtual meetings. It just gives you the ability to do so should circumstances warrant it in the future. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, is your mic, it's on, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think our City Attorney Vaughn has explained it succinctly. But I do want to add, just to make it a little bit clear for the public out there, is the 2-2, the vote, the split vote that we had at our meeting when this went down, didn't allow the council, under any circumstance, to have a remote meeting. So if by some chance, some emergency came up due to COVID or the numbers got too high that the governor had made an order that we couldn't meet or the county made an order, we were not in the position of having a remote meeting at all. We would have just had to cancel meeting. Am I correct on that?
Well, you would have to like reintroduce this resolution at an emergency meeting in order to reinstitute our remote meetings.
So this, there are other committees I sit on, other special district committees that are under the state of California. And this ordinance appears on the agenda every month. It, it, it's in no way saying that we have to meet remotely. So that's clear to everyone here in the public. But it, as, as Mr. Vaughn said, if some emergency comes up, we are in the immediate position of making a decision as a council and not have to come back here to make a decision to go remote. So it's only for safety. It's, it's not to tell this council that, you know, we're going to go back to remote meetings. That's not the case at all. And, and I think maybe there was a little bit of misunderstanding the last time this was brought forth to the council. So that's the reason why I requested it to come back, for the safety of council and for the safety of our community, if we had to go back into remote meetings by some order or for some particular reason from the county of Merced. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I personally don't, I've been trying to drive a stake in the heart of virtual meetings for a while. They are an emergency. And we, apparently, we're still in a state of emergency, but my concern is that we, you know, we're going to spend thousands of dollars to fly to Washington to get in the face of our senators' staff and our congressman's staff. And we can meet with them virtually all day long. But it doesn't have the same effect. When we were meeting virtually, we almost had no one at public forum. And to me, that means that the public is not as involved as it could be, should be, doesn't feel connected. So if there's a way that we could craft this language on this, maybe, I don't know if we would modify it tonight or if this language has to be the way it's laid down, that if a council member had a hard time, you know, had a reason for logging in from somewhere else, I can, I can support that. But the meetings, unless there's some catastrophic situation again, to me, these meetings have to take place based here in City Hall. Now, MCAG does their meetings in the, in the chamber. And then they allow distance now, realize that their members are 40, 50 miles away from each other. With us, we all live within the jurisdiction. None of us is more than, what, 10 minutes from here? And so we need to hold these meetings in the chamber. And those that can attend need to. Mr. Yamas, have you logged in here? Were you waiting to, to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, so this is, that's a previous, okay, that was from a previous login. This new computer system is a bit confusing. Thank you. All right. So I'm trying to keep things in person as much as possible. I recognize and respect Ms. Lewis's concerns. And I know, and so I, I don't want to show any disrespect or callousness to that concern. It's a philosophy of mine that the meetings are in person, if at all. And the founders, the founders of this country, spent a lot of money building a capital. The state will build a lot of money spending a capital. And where you meet to govern is in the capital, in City Hall. Where you meet to govern is in City Hall. Because when the people come in, we saw this evening, we saw a whole rank of people coming in to their redress of grievance, essentially what the First Amendment would say. That's why we need these in person. So people can feel that they can come in here, speak directly to their representatives, and know they're being heard and, and have that personal connection. So. So, um, I think, I, I will go ahead now and a little to Mr. Yamas, I believe he wants to speak on the item as well. I see.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo many of the mayor's concerns or, uh, positions here on this. Again, the, the purpose of, uh, amending the Brown Act was to address a, an emergency situation, a pandemic that was, at that time, a lot of unknowns. Uh, we didn't know what was happening, we didn't have the science, we didn't have a lot of information, and this was the, the remedy for that in order to continue to have input from the public and have government continue to function. However, as we know now, uh, the pandemic is, uh, winding down. There's, yes, there are some variants out there, uh, there are people, uh, contracting it, but more likely than not, they're, they're getting tested to travel or to do something else for a medical procedure, and that's how they're finding out that they're positive. And these infections are not causing symptoms. Grand, grand majority of them are asymptomatic, and also, uh, there's been no hospitalization or grave illness due to these, uh, variants. So I don't see the, the justification, I don't see the threat, I don't see the need for it. I think that we need to, uh... We show up here twice a month, this is our point and place of duty, twice a month for a few hours. If, if we're that afraid, then, well, you know, you can take your, your precautions or your masks, uh, sanitize your hands, uh, we have these Plex glasses that, uh, I didn't know they were going up, but here they are. Uh, so we're taking those precautions, we can social distance, we can do a lot of things that don't require us to change, uh, the way we meet. And again, I have a question for, uh, the city attorney. If we were to enact this, uh, resolution, uh, as stated, and something were to happen, would we, would we have to meet in order to go to virtual, or would it just be automatic? How would that happen?
You could go straight to virtual.
So there would be no public announcement, we wouldn't meet to make that decision?
No, the, the city manager would make that decision.
Okay. Well, the way it is now, if there was an emergency, we could meet and decide to go virtual. So there's nothing preventing us from responding to a threat. So for me, again, as the mayor said, uh, having someone here in front of you makes an impact. Having that person understand that they're connecting with you makes an impact, and that goes to the, uh, the basis, the fundamentals of our constitutional republic, is that ability to address and redress your government. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, question for City Attorney Bill Vaughn. Would this allow us to do a hybrid option, um, at all? I'm just wondering if somebody tests positive for COVID and they're, um, say for myself, we test positive for COVID, don't have any symptoms, but I don't want to come in here and spread it to the rest of the, um, people in here. Would this allow me to remote in and at least have my voice heard?
I believe so, yes, but most of the...
Oh, Mr. Vaughn, hang on, your microphone got shut off. Oh, there you go. Nope, not intentional.
I, I would believe, I believe it would allow the city to do a hybrid meeting, however, all of the resolutions that I've looked at where hybrid meetings are happening, they actually have language in their resolutions that'll authorize a hybrid meeting, uh, and so I would feel more comfortable that we, um, change this resolution to include that, number one. Number two, I don't know whether we have the, uh, IT ability to do hybrid meetings at this period of time.
Okay, so I guess that's something that we can work on, then.
Okay. Very good, Mr. Jones. Um, if it would allow a hybrid meeting, and we can put that, you know, then, then we can let our tech, tech department, uh, work it out, uh, I, I can support a hybrid meeting, um, option, uh, written into, if we need to write it into, into the, the item, the resolution. Um, I, I would just want to make the point so strongly, agreeing with Mr. Yamas, that the meetings need to be here, in person. If someone needs, good point, Mr. Jones, uh, someone tests positive, they can still log in, or someone has something else, you may have, be ill, uh, something to that effect. Um, that's a recognizable and, um, and, and respected, uh, position. I have a couple of more, a couple more council members wishing to speak with Mr. Vaughn. I'll let you address...
So in terms of the hybrid meeting, if that's the direction of the council, I would prefer to come back with a resolution that, that, uh, deals with that in the body of the resolution, so that there's no guesswork as to whether that is appropriate or not.
Okay, so we're not, so we're not trying to write, uh, resolution language in the middle of council?
I wouldn't do it tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lambert?
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. So I, I did vote for it the last time, and the reason being is the state of California gave us the rest of this year for this, uh, it's for the possibility. It wasn't meaning that we were gonna stay virtual, but it was a possibility if we did come down with this illness, whether it's two or three of us, if we voted against it, two or three of us down, well, unfortunately, we would not have a quorum. So I voted for it and still allow, I'm hoping we can change the language, uh, to read, if we have to go, one or two of us go virtual during that time, we'd be able to stay virtual and still be able to have our meetings. So that's why I, uh, uh, 'cause unfortunately, not having this, and a couple of us do get sick, that need to be on the, the, for the quorum, unfortunately, we might not be able to have a quorum. So I, I vote for it, and I guess we're gonna pass it on, and hopefully we can change the language to vote for the language to have a hybrid. So that's the reason why I voted for it.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, that, and, and I want to thank, um, Councilmember Brett for jogging my memory, 'cause that was one of the original intents that I'd asked for to bring it back, is if anyone needed to be remote, we didn't have the option of doing that. So, um, since it, the language has to be recrafted, then, you know, I have no problem bringing it back. But by no means, um, was it my intention to, to thwart anyone's constitutional right to show up at a meeting, or to have our public redress their concerns to, uh, the council? But, um, to give the council mem, uh, councilmembers options, if for some reason they were not able to attend meeting, and based on the way it was crafted before, and I think the way it was understood, we didn't have that option to do so.
Very good. Well, uh, you, you were the one who requested the item pulled. Would you like to make the motion to continue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion, um, uh, make a motion to request Resolution Number 6487, uh, to be continued for revision, uh, to the next council meeting.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, and a second by Councilmember Lambert, to continue item H in Consent Agenda, uh, to the next meeting for, uh, a re-revision by the city attorney and staff to, uh, accommodate... Uh, we can, we can go two meetings. So, so then the, the second meeting in May? Let me grab my calendar. Eighteenth. Pardon me, these chairs like to run. Go ahead, Ms. Lewis, if you want to revise your... Uh, it will be.
Thank you. I'll revise that motion to bring, um, the resolution back to the May 18th council meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Lambert?
Second.
Second revision? Thank you. I have a motion, Councilmember Lewis, and second by Councilmember Lambert, as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carried. Once again, excellent discussion, gets excellent results. Um, now, um, let's see, I believe that was our only item pulled from consent, so, uh, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda as submitted? I see Ms. Lewis is next in the queue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Mayor Portim Lambert, to approve the consent agenda as submitted, minus measure H. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Now move on to item seven. Public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And for this, we go to our public hearing. Our first item, A, is to receive public comment and consideration of a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and Conditional Use Permit Number 2022-02, to allow the use of a Type 47 alcohol license for the on-sale of general alcohol in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment for Eddie's Cafe located at 401 West Pacheco Boulevard, Assessor's Parcel Number 027161048. For that, we go to Community and Development Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, tonight, the presentation will be presented to you by our Associate Planner, Rudy Lukin.
Let me get your microphone on. There you go.
Thank you, Director Elms, Mayor, council members. I am Associate Planner Rudy Lukin, and I will now present Use Permit 2022-02. The property is located at 401 West Pacheco Boulevard, Assessor Parcel Number 027161-048. The zoning for the property is highway commercial, and the general plan and use designation is commercial. Tonight, we're here to have the city council consider a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, and also to consider approval of Use Permit 2022-02 to allow the use of a Type 47 alcohol license for the on-sale of general alcohol for a bona fide eating place. In regards to the ABC license Type 47, uh, Use Permit is needed for the issuance of any ABC license within the city. Uh, Type 47 ABC license consists of the on-sale of general alcohol with any type of eating establishment. In this case, Eddie's Cafe presently has a Type 41 license. Uh, ABC, ABC license are regulated by the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Uh, the days and hours of operation for Eddie's Cafe will be Monday through Sunday from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM. Again, presently, Eddie's Cafe has a Conditional Use Permit 2010-04, which approved a Type 21 beer and wine license. In regards to the proposed Use Permit, it meets all general Use Permit criteria, uh, it also meets the on-sale criteria, and again, ABC is issuing authority of this license, so they will have to go through further, uh, rigorous requirements through them. In regards to the California Environmental Quality Act, this, this project meets a categorical exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301, existing facilities. The project site is located in the Census Track 2301. There are presently only 10 licenses within that Census Track, so the approval of this license will not add, as this will replace their existing license. Here is the, uh, security plan that they will provide. Uh, so their existing dining area that's to the back is gonna be considered their bar area, they will build a bar. Here are pictures of the interior of the diner. This is their front seating area, and this is their proposed bar area. It will also have customer seating, but there will have a bar, uh, towards the back where you see the, uh, the flag. The Los Banas Planning Commission approved the, or recommended approval of the Conditional Use Permit on March 23rd, 2022. Public hearing notices were published in the Los Banas enterprise, and also mailed out to adjacent property owners on Friday, April 8th, 2022. No comments were received at that time of the preparation of the staff report. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301, existing facilities, and also approving Use Permit 2022-02 to allow the on-sale of general alcohol through a Type 47 ABC license for Eddie's Cafe located at 401 West Pacheco Boulevard, Assessor Parcel Number 027161-042. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll, since we have you at the podium, if any council have any questions of staff now, um, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you bring back up the picture where the bar is going to be? Okay, the, the door that is towards the back where you said the bar is gonna be on the wall, is, is that, uh, an area for public use?
Uh, no, so that is the office area from what, what I've been told. Um, and, uh, it's only for employees or, or the management. Uh, the bar will be located to, to the side of that.
Okay, so, um, is, is that gonna be secured off some kind of way so that people don't get confused that it's not for public use?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure they'll have a counter that wraps all the way around from wall to wall. Um, they didn't disclose any information as far as the design of the bar, but more than likely, uh, from the times I've been in there, they, that area has been, uh, the door, the door's always closed, so no public is necessarily going to the back, or to that back door.
Okay. And, um, for our police department, um, is there anything that you would have required, uh, that the police department would have required from, from this new configuration? 'Cause that was just all eating area before.
Correct.
So I don't know if there's gonna be cameras or any kind of security updates.
So, so there will be cameras, I'll go back to the, uh, security plan, and I do apologize, this is what was submitted. So the dots represent cameras. Um, as you could see, the proposed bar area is where they will have, uh, approximately, from what I could count right here, maybe four cameras, one at each corner?
Okay, so it appears that, that, that hallway where the door is has access to bathrooms as well as the office. That's what I see on the schematic.
Yes, yeah, I believe you're right. So I believe the, so the office is directly behind the bar area, and, but the restrooms will not be blocked away from the public.
Okay.
Typically, those restrooms are not for the public. Um, I'm sure if, if the other restrooms within the dining hall are occupied, that the public could use those restrooms if, if employees allow, um, but generally, that area is closed off. Uh, this will require, um, most likely a tenant improvement, um, that will go through the building department, um, and then also there's a condition of approval that requires the security cameras to be at the satisfaction of our police chief.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis? Mr. Lambert?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I'll give a little bit of experience, and maybe I might be able to answer Ms. Lewis's, uh, question on that bar. Unfortunately, the ABC will be doing a little bit more of a, not only investigating, but they will be looking at every place where that bar is gonna go. That bar will, they will have a different access to that back door that will not allow the public to get to that access. So the way they have the bar situated on there now, uh, that, the ABC will not, especially if being accessed to those bathrooms, we're not, is not gonna allow unless they have, uh, another, uh, exit. The only way for the public to in and out is gonna be from the front. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Seeing no other questions from council, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Thank you very much. So now we will, uh, open the public hearing for City Council Resolution Number 6488, which will approve Conditional Use Permit 2022-02 to allow the use of a Type 47 on-sale general alcohol license for Eddie's Cafe located at 401 West Pacheco Boulevard. Would anyone in the public like to speak in this public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council, and chair will entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6488 as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a... Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take that, thank you.
Very good. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve City Council Resolution Number 6488. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Item B, we have another public hearing. This one is to receive public comment and consideration of an annual adjustment to the Los Banas Development Impact Fee Schedule based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. And for this item, we go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This particular item, just a little bit of background. There we go. So back in January of 2020, the City Council approved Development Impact Fee Justification Study for the City of Los Banas. The development impact fees are established in conformance with the requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act, and a fee cannot include costs attributable to existing deficiencies but fund costs used to maintain the existing level of service or meet an adopted level of service that is consistent with the general plan. So that's directly from the government code, directly from the Mitigation Fee Act. And essentially, the city, through our development impact fees, can't fix what we already are deficient in. Development is only applicable to their proportionate share, so development's proportionate share to those facilities. The development impact fees do not pay for operations and maintenance of capital facilities or city staffing costs, so it's purely just for the facility or for equipment. And the development impact fees are separated from the general fund and from other city budget funds or accounts containing fees collected for other purposes. And that's all required within the Mitigation Fee Act. So the annual adjustment per Resolution Number 6163, that's the resolution that adopted our Development Impact Fee Justification Study. It states that the impact fees shall be modified annually and should be effective July 1 of each year. It should be done in accordance with the Engineering News Records for the Construction Cost Index, and it should be reported for the 12-month period ending in April. So the adjustment in the Engineering News Records Construction Cost Index ending in April 2022 was 14.8% increase. This increase would be applied to all development impact fees and would go into effect July 1, 2022. I would like to note for the council that last year's adjustment was 2.7%. And this increase of 14.8% is a reflection of the increased cost in construction. So this is a comparison chart to show what our current fee is for each of the land use type categories and what the proposed fee will be. Single-family, multifamily, and age-restricted units are for residential, and those are based per unit. Retail, office, institutional, and industrial are per 1,000 square feet that that fee is applied. Within the staff report, there is an exhibit that provides the breakdown. It's an attachment, Exhibit A, which shows the breakdown of the proportion that goes to the police impact fee, fire. There's a general government, there's a parks and recreation. That's all provided with the staff report, and I can provide further clarification on that breakdown if you need, but this is just a general breakdown based on the land use categories. So the environmental review, in accordance with SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15061, Section B, Subsection 3, this item is categorically exempt in that it does not have an effect on the environment. The fiscal impact, the 14.8% increase would ensure that new development is adequately funding its share of the costs of new public facilities as the cost to construct those projects increase over time. An example of this is our new police station. We see that the costs are increasing, and we need our development impact fees to keep up so that we can build those facilities when it is time to build them. It ensures the city does not subsidize new development's share of these facilities and that adequate funding is available when the city is ready to construct those projects. So a public notice, a public hearing notice, was published in the Los Banas Enterprise on March 25, 2022. Local developers and the Builders Institute, they were directly mailed public notices on March 15, 2022, and no formal comments have been received. And that's the Builders Industry Association. So staff is recommending that the City Council would open the public hearing to hear any public comments regarding the proposed impact fee adjustment, find the proposed impact fee adjustment exempt from SEQA guidelines pursuant to Section 15061B3, and adopt Resolution Number 6489 approving a 14.8% increase to development impact fees to reflect construction cost changes in 2022, and this would become effective on July 1, 2022. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Elms. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. Would anyone in the public like to speak to this item? City Council Resolution Number 6489. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to council. Council, does anyone have any questions of staff at this time? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just for edification. Stacy, on Exhibit A at the bottom, we have institutional fees and industrial fees. I understand the industrial, but what would fall under institutional fees?
Institutional could be for, say, a civic building. Say it's a Merced County facility that's being built or potentially a hospital. It would be within that category that we would pull from.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, on any of these types of development, is the developer able to ask for a waiver of any of these fees?
So we already have a reduction for age-restricted units, and really, it would be at the discretion of the City Council for development to come and provide their case of why they feel that their project is worthy of a reduction. But generally, all projects are required to pay their fair share.
Okay.
Unless approved by the council otherwise.
I just want to kind of give council like a kind of big picture here. So it's no surprise we're very short on market rate multifamily units, especially in the larger range, 150, 200 units. Based on these impact fees, for, say, a first-class apartment developer, it would cost over $4.5 million just in development fees. So that is pretty hefty, and that could be why developers are slow at knocking on our doors to come in for large multifamily complexes, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, I don't remember what year it was, but when we had the senior citizen complex built off of Overland, was it? They came and requested reduction or no fees under this program. But the one thing we have to remember is, and in particularly, that particular unit, I recall indicating that it would be a high probability that there would be a lot of services from our fire department going in there because of the seniors and possibly needing medical aid. So we have to remember and be cognizant of the fact that we still have our departments that we have to run, and those departments need their fees in order to operate. And by waiving them, because some developer doesn't want to pay them, doesn't help our city. So it's one of the ways that we're able to stay afloat and stay operational when these fees are instituted and collected by the developers who want to come here and develop, regardless of whether it's residential or industrial, retail, what have you. The fees are necessary in order for us to continue to offer the services to our communities that we do for police and fire, public works, what have you. So that's just the other side of the coin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. 14.8%. Sounds about right. I know when I go to buy stuff to build now, it's... The prices have shot way up. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones?
I do have a quick response. You know, when the city's lacking certain amenities to even just, let's face it, some of our police officers commute an hour and a half away because they can't find housing, we might find it vital down the road to really take a hard look at a waiver on an apartment complex or a facility if we need an amenity like that. So just hope council's not so close-minded where they just don't consider the pros instead of just looking at all the cons on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, can I... I know Councilmember Jones asked that question, but can I get Stacy to... Can you say that one more time on the waiver?
It would be up to the discretion of the City Council.
So it's not inside the paperwork now for a waiver, correct?
No.
But it can be considered if they brought it to it?
On a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. So this keeps the discretion of the City Council. And if someone came with something like, "We're going to build you a brand-new, beautiful, state-of-the-art hospital. Maybe we can cut you a little slack on fees or something." We have that authority to do so, something at the City Council's discretion. But this is the rulebook, and then everybody follows the rulebook unless they have something really special to offer, then the council has the authority and the discretion, which is why we're here. Thank you so much. So with that, if there's no further discussion, Chair will entertain a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6489 approving an increase in development impact fees reflect increases in the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index 2022. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, is mine on?
Let's see, yes, you are on now.
All right, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution Number 6489. That's red.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Yamas?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'll take that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Portim Lambert and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve City Council Resolution Number 6489. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation and all the hard work to bring it to us. I don't know if the public realizes that whenever you see a presentation come to council, staff, guests, these presentations take a great deal of time to put together so they can get you the information, compact it, and give it usable for us. And we appreciate that very much. We now move to item eight. Consideration of approval of City Council... Let me shut these extra microphone off once again. All right. Consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 6490 authorizing the city manager to deploy solar photovoltaic systems at municipal facilities in partnership with the city's public power provider, Peninsula Clean Energy, through a standard power purchase agreement. And for this item, we're going to go to Public Works Director, City Engineer Ton, and Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms. Who gets to start?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll start. We're going to tag-team this presentation.
Okay, very good.
I'm glad to have Nir on as my partner. So just a little bit of background. Back in February of this year, there was a council comment for staff to explore solar options at the various city facilities. The community center electricity consumption, this was a particular item that had been brought forward to the council, was regarding that electricity consumption. And there was an increase since March. And so due to that increase, staff reached out to our partner, Peninsula Clean Energy, as we are a member of the Joint Powers Authority, to see if there was any programs for the member jurisdictions that they currently had in place. And it just so happened, they were starting this solar pilot program, and that Los Banas could potentially have some facilities that could be candidates. So they started to study our facilities, and they determined that two facilities, the community center and our wastewater treatment plant, could be potential candidates for this pilot solar program because they have the most electricity consumption. Those two facilities are our heaviest users within the city. So the pilot solar program, just an overview, the summary, just in summary, it accelerates the local renewable energy deployment at a local government facilities. And the objective of this particular program is to reduce customer energy costs, and in this case, it would be to the city to reduce our costs and to protect against the rise in PG&Es rates, which we have more detail in future slides that Nir is going to go over. It also helps local governments achieve our sustainability goals. City of Los Banas, we do have policies and goals within our general plan that we will be achieving energy sustainability. And then it facilitates local solar and storage towards Peninsula Clean Energy's goal of 20 megawatts by 2025. So they have goals, and mutually, we also have goals so we can help each other. And then it develops a reproducible program. So this is the pilot program, but hopefully, this will be a reproducible program for future phases of future city facilities. There is a technical partner, McCallmont Engineering. They were competitively selected PV design and engineering firm. They're based out of Campbell, California, and they were selected as an engineering firm that PCE is utilizing, and they specialize in commercial, industrial, and utility-scale facilities. So I'm going to turn it over to Nir.
Thank you, Stacy. Again, council, I think this is a great opportunity for us to kind of explore these options as mentioned by Stacy. This is a pilot program. It's just so happened that when we see the increase or the jump in our electricity consumption at our community center, that this program just happened to be also available. And it's like Stacy mentioned also, because we are doing it in partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy, we are actually doing it in aggregate with many other cities also. And then I will touch base on that at the end of the presentation as to who is already committed to participate in this program. But essentially, the way this pilot program works is through a PPA, which is a power purchase agreement. So essentially, what that is, is the city leasing the solar panel in partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy is the one that actually doing the procurement of the solar system itself. So that's give us a benefit of not having to front up the cost of this if we were to do a traditional design bid-built process. Now, Peninsula Clean Energy, as a JPA with all other cities, will still follow a competitive procurement process. So if the city were to actually do a design bid-built project, we would actually be in the same kind of category with them in term of getting the same vendor, the same supplier that would bid on this project. But by partnering with PCE, we get the benefit of the economy of scale because now we are doing multiple facility with multiple of a city. In addition to this, is that by going through a PPA, again, because we do not own the solar system itself, is that all the maintenance responsibility as well as the warranty will be taken care of by PCE. Again, the next slide here, I have kind of broader definitions of a power purchase agreement. Again, it is very similar to kind of a leasing system where we basically lease the solar panel from PCE. PCE is the one procuring that. They're putting that at our facility, and then we get the benefits of the electricity generations as well as the fixed cost of the dollar per kilowatt hour that would be produced by the solar systems. The benefit of this is that because the solar system at our facility will be generating the electricity, we get the benefit of a fixed cost. So right now, we are at the mercy of PG&E when it comes to our electricity consumptions. As we're all aware, with the gas prices going up and everything, the electricity that we're buying from PG&E are also expected to go up in the next year over year. So in this case, we kind of provide two examples for you to take a look at here. On the blue box on the left, a kind of example of a facility with 1,000 kilowatt-hour per month using the PG&E rate of roughly averaging about 20 cent per kilowatt. You can see just a straight math there, it's about $200 per month. Under the PPA agreement, we've... we would be able to achieve, our assumption is, at about 14 cent per kilowatt-hour. So it's a direct saving already from choosing those, the PPA route. Now, understandable that some of the rate from PG&E will not be bypassable, such as the distributions or the connection fee, because over at the evening time, when the solar panels are not producing energy, we are still would be using the electricity from PG&E. It's just that it's now going to be combined into a net energy metering process for our benefit. Okay? On the next slide, so as Stacy mentions, PCE at their own cost have already hired an engineering consultant firms. They actually help us take a look at our facility and how we can maximize the deployment of the solar panel. So what you see here on the presentation, this is at our community center. All the solar array that we have on there, you see there's multiple options. There are some carport options. There's also on-the-roof options. Now, this is kind of a full build-out for the entire systems. You know, staff will be working with PCE to select one that would best suit it for our facility. Now, what's unique about this system is that it's the system that we put in at the community center can only offset 100% of the load that we would be used at the community. We cannot build a systems that will be producing more electricity than we would otherwise use. So that is something that is a little bit different. But as you can see, you know, based on our estimate, looking at our previous PG&E bill, the community center alone has used roughly about 250,000 kilowatt-hour per year for electricity. At the wastewater treatment plants, this is another high-consumption area that we would see. Currently, we're looking at an estimate of about 493,000 kilowatt-hour per year. The difference between the deployment at the wastewater treatment plant is that this setup will actually be a ground-mounted just because, you know, there is no parking lot or anything out there. So this systems, particularly for wastewater treatment plant, will be a little bit cheaper than that of the community center. So with that, we did a little bit of preliminary engineering or estimates on the systems based costs on previous facilities and also working with our technical partner, McCallmont Engineering, coming up with an estimated system cost and back calculating based on the system that would be deployed at each one of our systems, how much the saving would be. So looking at this chart, we have separated the community center as well as the wastewater treatment plant. After paying the fixed rate under the PPA, you can see on the column on the right, there's potential net saving of about $39,000 at the community center and about $58,000 at the wastewater treatment plant. And that's just on year one. Knowing that PG&E rate will essentially increase year over year, this saving will actually going to escalate. So the next slide here, as you can see, the agreement under the PPA for the term right now, what we're considering is a 20-year term for the PPA, is that there will be minimal to no increase under the PPA fixed rate. In comparisons, the PG&E rate will continue to estimate at about 5% year over year. So over the life of the PPA agreement itself, we're estimating roughly about $1.3 million saving at the community center and about $1.8 million saving at the wastewater treatment plant under this concept. So here's the list of the project portfolios that have already been, various other cities in the peninsula that have already committed to participate in this program. So that's approximately nine other cities at various government facilities that's already been committed. I think Los Baños and San Bruno, we are the last two in this program. So with that, we'll let Stacy close this up.
Thank you, Niran. So with that, staff is recommending that the City Council would consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to deploy a solar PV system at the community center and the wastewater treatment plant in partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy. Should the city manager determine that there is a cost benefit or other community benefits as determined by the city following participation in a collaborative procurement led by Peninsula Clean Energy? Now, the way that the resolution is written is that this would only be, we would only move forward with a PPA, a power purchase agreement, should it be determined that there is a cost benefit to the city of Los Banos, and that determination would be made by the city manager. So currently, if we kept that status quo, we know we would have continual 5% at least minimum year-over-year increases and that we would be providing our community cost savings by entering into a program such as this. So that concludes our presentation. We do have representatives from Peninsula Clean Energy just here in case we need to answer some technical questions. We have Dave Frybush from Peninsula Clean Energy and Mark Hirschman from Peninsula Clean Energy as well. And that concludes our report.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Los Banos. Did I see that those solar panels are going to be on the parking lot in the community center? So they're also going to function as a shade for the parking lot, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We are looking at a carport solution for that.
Okay, I've seen that at Pajaco High School, they have those. To me, that you solve even more than, when you can solve even more than one problem at once, I think you're doing great stuff. I think it's exciting to pursue because overall, savings of $3 million is, that's a good chunk of change. So, council, is there any question or comment? Ms. Yamas, are you logging in? Okay, there you go. Okay, now, okay, now, it's got a, this is a very strange system.
Yeah.
Sorry. No problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Elms, and Director Ton for that presentation. Appreciate it, and I appreciate you making the time to meet with me. And Mr., again, I'm horrible with names, but the two gentlemen from Peninsula Clean Energy, again, thank you for your time. And Mr. Benetti. I've got a couple of questions, some concerns. Is it, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse on this, but the sourcing of these photovoltaic panels, you know, they're coming from China. They produce, what, 60% of the polycalcum, which is used in the production of these things. There's ample evidence that they're using forced labor. They're destroying ethnic groups, and they're, again, it's something I really don't want to be part of. And also, it just, there's no recycling to these things. So we're not addressing the end usage. Again, there's a 20-year life for these. We're not addressing those things. I don't want to go back to the Dust Revolution where we created all these problems with oil and we took a better part of last century to correct some of those problems. I don't want to revisit history in that respect. Two is that I'd like, prior to the city manager approving this, I'd like for him to come back to the city council so that there's some oversight and transparency as to what the taxpayers are going to be committed to. And I don't see that here. I mean, this could be agreed about tonight, and we wouldn't know exactly what those numbers and figures are. And I think that the taxpayers have a right to know exactly what they're being committed to. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Yamas. We could essentially modify this resolution to be a pursue-and-bring-back item, correct, Mr. Vaughn? That's not, see, the way the actual item on the agenda reads is to go ahead and authorize the city manager to deploy. And I think what Mr. Yamas is looking for is the opportunity to bring it back before that deployment decision is made. Let me get, and there's your microphone.
Yes, as I understand it, this is a template resolution drafted by PCE. They're comfortable with the language that's in there now in terms of moving forward and committing dollars and energy into the project. I don't know that they would be comfortable with the language as amended. That hasn't been discussed. I haven't discussed it with them. I don't know if Niran and Stacy have. This language was actually renegotiated language from even stricter language. So I really can't address that. Certainly, it's your resolution, so you can amend it however you see fit. I'm not sure that it would be acceptable to PCE, though.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on that note a little bit, the reason why we chose the language the way it is or the way it is crafted that way is the level of commitment. You know, just for example, you know, when we put out projects to bid and stuff like that for the city, right? A lot of times, the bidder would like to understand that, you know, city council have allocated a certain amount of budget so that the project is having a certain level of commitment. So because we are doing this with many other jurisdictions, right? The bidder or the people that will be submitting these RFP or proposal will kind of look at all of the city to making sure that there is a level of commitment from the city to moving forward to this project if there is a cost benefit to the city, right? So that's why it is very important that, you know, we providing this language to them, knowing that, hey, if for some reason Los Baños decided to pull out or another city decided to pull out, it's not going to impact those other eight or nine because essentially, if the city pull out, let's say, for example, the city of Los Baños pull out, it does impact the prices that the RFP, that the proposer would essentially provide it to the 10 other cities. And that's why, for the benefit of all 10 cities, they're proposing for us to have this level of commitment upfront. Now, it is, like Stacy mentioned, it is not locking us in that, hey, because we are approving this, we're assigning a PPA is that it give us the option to participate in this program with a level of commitment and allowing staff to then review this and making sure that there is going to be a cost benefit or a community benefit to the city.
Okay, so the bid would still have to come back to council to be approved, is that correct? Or no? It would not?
The bid would not. However, if the city council would like to see, what we could do is, once we have crafted the PPA, understanding the total cost benefit, we can provide those report to city council then.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ton. I'll go, I have more council members. Mr. Lambert?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had the privilege to sit in on the virtual meeting with this. And I guess it kind of says right at the top, there is no upfront cost. It's just straight, once it's built, start saving. It's just we got to go with the right crew that's going to build the system. For tax dollars, I'm not sure where that's coming in at because this is for our city facilities. This is, like I said, if there's no money upfront for this, they're going to build the system. We're going to start saving. And where we're going to save money is maintenance, from what I understand, the maintenance fees. The solar panels go down. They replace the solar panels. They clean the solar panels if they need clean. So I, we've been looking into solar panels for the community center anyway. It would cost us upfront a whole lot more than what it's actually going to cost us throughout the system that we're going to go with now. And if I see the savings that we're going to save each year, you know, even, but we give them the opportunity to see which ones we're going to go with. I see this as, for the city itself, a win-win situation. That's where I see it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it's a waste of time to even bring this back. It's as simple as this. I'm sure our fuel bill for our vehicles are pretty pricey every month, what we have to pay out. If our city manager found a supply that was 30% less, I don't think there's really any need to discuss it. You know, we can talk about the source of it and all that, but at the end of the day, we'd be doing the city a disservice by not going forward to save 30%. And I'm just guessing this is roughly about that based on the numbers that were put up. So we shouldn't be wasting any more time on this. We need to not micromanage the city manager and just move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, I just want to say I don't see this as micromanaging. Historically, when we approve contracts and there's a RFP out, it always comes back to council for final approval. And maybe I heard something different here because I think we all had the privilege of a virtual meeting. When we had that virtual meeting, I was told that there would be a 1% annual increase, but I'm hearing tonight it's going to be 5%. So, you know, maybe I got a different message there.
Just a clarification, we can go back to that slide. The 1% would be within the PPA. That would be up to 1% locked in with our PPA. And that would be PCE's potential rate. And though, on this slide, it explains that PG&E has already increased their rates. In 2023, it's going to be 18%. And it is estimated year-over-year after that to be at least a 5%. That's where the 5% is PG&E's rates year after year.
Okay, okay.
And to clarify, too, the 1% that are presented here, that is up to the 1% like Stacy's talking about, that in case the cost of maintenance goes up, we want to make sure we have some sort of protection. But the goal with PCE is to make, the goal is 0% increase under the PPA, but it could go up to 1%.
And, you know, certainly, I had a concern when I spoke to staff about panels being made in China. I'd like to hear from the staff Uh, I'd like to hear from, uh, the staff as to what their intentions are. I, I know that, uh, there are some green companies that refuse to buy any panels from China, but I'd like to know what the intention here is for this organization. I, 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 I hear, you know, Councilmember Yamas, uh, Yamas's position, but for me, I, I want to be able to provide jobs here in the United States for people who make products here in the United States and make sure that they're staying in business and, and they're, they're, uh, garnering an income from that. So I would, I would like to hear from them to find out if in their RFP, they're just going to open it up to whoever has the cheapest panels or if we're looking at, um, you know, purchasing, uh, equipment from the United States.
No, that's great questions, Councilmember Lewis, and I appreciate you asking that question beforehand and meet with us virtually. Um, we did get to explore that options with PCE, so the way we move forward is when we set up the RFP, there's going to be two options for the bidder. One is the competitive process of anyone can bid on the project, uh, get any supplier from any sources you would like. And option number two is to have the source, uh, uh, solely in the United States. One thing that is a little bit, uh, uh, challenging for us, um, when it comes to sourcing, uh, equipment and especially solar panel from the United States, it might be assembles or built in the U.S., but a lot of the, the, um, the natural materials or the natural resources like silicon and stuff are a lot of time, um, still dominated by a, a foreign, um, uh, country.
And, and, and again, I, I understand that, but I'm looking more at making sure that we are providing jobs for, uh, people who live here in the United States, and that's my position on that. So, um, you know, again, I, I'd like to, well, you, you've given that position. I, I didn't hear that in the virtual meeting that that would be the case. But, but I do, you know, believe in open government and I do believe that taxpayers have the right to know where their top tax dollars are going. Uh, this has nothing to do with me trusting our city manager or over, you know, micromanaging. I just feel like, you know, this is, this is a lot of money, um, we're going to be spending somewhere, um, I think this was on page eight, if that could be brought back up. Yeah, is this, this, uh, estimate cost for the panels? This is a, is that an annual cost that we're looking at?
So the column in red is the actual rate that would paid, um, to P, to, to PCE under the, the PPA. And then the column on the left that said estimated saving, those are the costs, uh, not the cost, the saving from generating the less electricity in replacement of PG&E.
Okay, so remind me again, there are two red columns here. One is for the rental of the equipment, the other is a fee they're charging us, just a fee for doing the services.
Operations of that.
Okay, and, and is this, are these, these are annual costs?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I, I think, I think that's pretty much all that I have to say. But I think, I think we owe it to our, our community to let them know what we're, we're about to put out. And it is a cost savings to us in our PG&E. I'm really happy about that part, um, but I, I just think the public needs to know. And, and, um, I think the council needs to know what we're going to agree to. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to clarify, this option one and option two, the option two is that everything's manufactured in the United States and that, that option is provided by the contractor and approved by PCE?
That's correct. So when we evaluated, there would be two bids that would be received. One is the most competitive price, which is any sources, and then two is the price for only American-made solar panels.
Okay, very good. I, I do know P, PCE has some pretty strict, um, pretty strict rules about who does work for them, um, and particularly, uh, they're particularly, uh, protective of American labor. I know that, you know, and manufacturing having sitting on the meetings and make sure that the work is done properly by, by, uh, American craftsmen, so, um, and tradesmen. So, uh, for that, I'm glad to hear that. There's one more, one more positive in, in that approach. Mr. Yamas wants to speak again here, so I will open up his mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, this is, uh, just proper oversight. This is proper, again, uh, oversight of a governing body. We're committing taxpayers to this contract. It's part of our responsibility to provide them with these numbers. And again, it has nothing to do with trust or not trust, it's part of transparency and oversight. And I, I don't think that, uh, having that language amended to this, uh, this, uh, resolution would, uh, make any difference because we are committing to it. We're just saying we'd like to have the numbers as to what we are being committed to. We're not saying that we want to back out. We're not saying anything to that effect. We're just saying that this is, again, part of our duties to provide the taxpayers with what we are committing them to. Most of us probably won't be here in a couple of years, but now we're going to saddle them with them and they at least need to know what we're, uh, why we're doing this and what it's going to cost them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So just to be clear, Mr. Yamas, you're, you're, uh, you're okay with this, with this resolution, but you want the information of, to the cost that's been brought back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, any further discussion? If not, Cheryl entertain a motion to consider approval of City Council Resolution Number Six Four Nine Zero. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to adopt City Council Resolution Number Six Four Nine Zero as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr., Mr., uh, Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Mayor Portem Lambert to approve City Council Resolution Number Six Four Nine Zero, authorizing city manager to deploy solar water systems at municipal facilities in partnership with the city's public power provider, Peninsula Clean Energy through a standard power purchase agreement. All in favor? Aye opposed? So we have a three, uh, three-two vote. Motion carries, uh, with Councilmember Yamas and Councilmember Lewis dissenting. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming to Los Banas. If you're going back to the peninsula tonight, have a safe ride. If you're not, feel free to spend all the money you, you'd like in Los Banas, uh, before you go. Thanks. Very good. We move on to item nine, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number Six Four Nine One, adopting the two, twenty twenty-one Merced County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. And for that, we have Fire Chief Mason Hurley. Thank you.
There was a time I could come up here and not need my glasses, so.
I remember those days.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, tonight, uh, I'm bringing to you Resolution Sixty Four Ninety One. I'll be asking to adopt the two thousand twenty-one Merced County Multi Jurisdictional Ha- Local Hazard, Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a plan that was, uh, that we, is a, is a working document. It's a living document that we come back to, uh, every, every five years, start working as it, as, as a group of the, of the multi-jurisdictions in our county along with Merced County. So its first page, it talks about the unincorporated areas of Merced County, City of Atwater, City de los Palos, Castine, Livingston, Los Banas and Merced. And that's just a good example of how our, our, our communities in a Merced County work together to, uh, to benefit their overall safety and, and reduce the hazards within our jurisdiction. The introduction and purpose, the, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, it's going to be identified as the LHMP, is a, is a planning document for hazard mitigation focusing on primary nat- primary, primarily on natural hazards. Its purpose is to identify hazards in an area, in the areas of, uh, way and ways to mitigate the impacts of those hazards as they occur. This plan was developed in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations and pursuant to the Regulations of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand twenty. The Disaster Mitigation Act requires state and local governments to develop multi-hazard mitigation plans to maintain their eligibility, uh, for certain federal disasters assistance and hazard mitigation funding programs. Communities at risk, uh, from natural disasters cannot afford to jeopardize this funding. So we do this as part of what is required by the, by the, um, the hazard, the Code of Federal Regulations and the, um, and the Mitigation Act, Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand twenty. Merced County OES contracted with Woods Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated on November third, two thousand twenty to facilitate the development of that Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. The contracted services were funded by Federal Emergency Management Industry FEMA, uh, Pre-Disaster Mitigation, uh, Plan Grant. So the funding came from that grant to, to use the, uh, Woods, um, environmental to, to help plan this process. An operational area planning team was developed that included members from our participating jurisdictions. The planning team represents, representatives decided to work collectively on the plan and the jurisdiction, jurisdictional annexes together. The city of Los Banas, uh, was represented, uh, mostly, uh, with myself as Fire Chief. I had a lot of help from William Vi, the Public Works Operations Manager, and Stacy Sousa Elms and Planning Economic Develop- Development Director. I want to thank them for their help and their input in this plan. Also, in regards to Stacy and Planning Economic, this is a key document that is required for the general plan that we continue to work on and, and, and process. So I have a, a hazard mitigation plan. To ensure the public, the public consensus, uh, through a planning process on mitigation actions that best suit our community, it allows communities to focus on efforts and limited resources on a high, on the most highly desirable mitigation projects. Jurisdictions must have a, have a state and federally approved plan to apply for, apply for and receive mitigation grants. These grants can augment local mitigation activities already underway and future planned activities as well. Ultimately, these actions reduce the vulnerability to the communities, to the communities that are able and able to allow them to recover more quickly in, in a disaster. Some of the objectives in this plan is, are to, to provide public opportunities throughout the plan, uh, development and drafting process to provide input, taking special care to make the plan outcome relevant to the impacted community, update the risk assessment using the most recent disaster data and information. Some of these things that in regards to new data, um, ten years ago or five years ago when this plan was, was revised, um, we didn't have as much, a lot of some other hazards that we deal with now, such as civil unrest. So those were conversations in some of the planning process of this, just as an example. Update hazard mitigation goals, objectives and actions as they relate to reducing loss in life, uh, and property from natural and human-made hazards and obtain state and federal approval of the updated plan. So having their approval is extremely important for us to have this plan. With inflation and cost of materials on the rise, constant reconstruction can be, can be a continued strain on the already stressed jurisdictional budgets. Hazard mitigation planning and related grant funding break the expensive cycle of damage and reconstruction by taking long-term views for, of a better community and land use planning, uh, of which citizens' actions in, in central, is, is essential and necessary. So what are some of the benefits, uh, for this plan? It reduces the loss of life, property, essential services, critical infra, critical facilities and economic hardship. It reduces short-term and long-term recovery and also the reconstruction costs. It increases the cooperation and communications with the communities, uh, throughout the planning process and increases the state and federal funding for pre-disaster recover projects , uh, within our city. Types of mitigation techniques, um, can be utilized for fire, for prevention. It keeps, uh, our hazards from getting worse. Property protections modifies, uh, existing development subject, uh, subject to hazard risk, provides public education and awareness by informing people about the potential hazards and mitigation actions. Natural resource protections, it identifies the benefits of a dangerous and natural functions of the area to take advantage of the protection it provides, reduce the effects of hazards and improves the quality of the environment. It benefits emergency services by actions taken to ensure the continuity of emergency services and structural, and structural projects, man-made structures or improvements to control the hazards. Some of the common mitigation actions, uh, that are taken in the plan are retrofitting the, of structures and design of new constructions such as elevating or flood-proofing, uh, home or building, enforcement of building codes, uh, for floodplain management codes and environmental regulations, public safety measures such as the continual maintenance of roadways, culverts and drainage ditches. Protecting critical facilities and infrastructures from future hazards and events. Hazard, hazard disaster recovery, the continuity of operations, our COOP planning, development of, development and distribution of outreach materials related to hazard mitigation and also the deployment of warning systems. So our next steps, uh, for tonight is, first, I want to thank a few people that were key players in this and, um, first of all, Adam Admiral, who's here tonight. If you have any additional questions, he is the Emergency Service Manager for Merced County Office of Emergency Services. Greg Padilla, a Fire Captain and also the Assistant OES Coordinator for Merced County OES. Greg was a key, uh, facilitator in this plan. He kept everybody on track and I, I personally want to thank him, uh, for all his hard work. The City of Los Banas Staff Planning Team, the County of Merced and all the participating jurisdictions, and also Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions. They did a lot of work and a lot of, in time, uh, putting, putting in this plan and working with us all to, to get the document that you have in front of you. So city staff recommends that the City of Los Banas City Council approve Resolution Sixty Four Ninety One, adopting the two thousand twenty-one Merced County Multi Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. I know you received the plan, it's a very large document. To review that plan tonight would, uh, take a lot of time. This took, uh, almost a year or two to put, put together, um, but this was, there were some key points of what it, what it does and what it does for our, our, uh, community and countywide. It is something that is continuously at our fingertips to use, to go back and look at projects that we're working on, try to plan for new projects that are coming up. One of the key things that I, I, I want to put in this was the, the, the consideration of continuing the planning of the, you know, unreinforced buildings downtown and local inspections and, and making sure that we continue to improve our community for, to reduce the hazards and life, life loss in the future. So those things are in this plan and it's something that we want to keep on our, on our, on our desks and continue to look at, uh, for, for the next go around so we can see, make sure we stay on track. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. And if, if I'm unable to, I'm sure Adam is more than happy to, uh, he came here from this morning, this, this evening from Atwater, and, uh, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Lambert, did you have a question or? No? Okay. I'm, and once again, this confusing computer. Counsel, does anyone have any question or comment to our chief, Ms. Lewis? Oh, hang on, let me get that button there, it just erased everybody. Okay, now we're good.
Yes, Chief Hurley, um, when you mentioned toward the end of the presentation about, um, making sure that, um, this, this, uh, has this report, um, and what the city's supposed to do to keep up on unreinforced buildings, i- is there a particular area that you're talking about in regards to that?
It identifies in the actions in the plan that identifies the need to continue to do that. And if you looked at that, it's a, it's a project that started in the most recent years. There isn't a, a conclusion date on it. It's a, it's identifying the need and the, and continuing to look at resources to, and opportunities to, to improve that situation.
So what type, what type of buildings would that, uh, fall under as, as far as that particular?
Well, that, that would fall, just in regards to that topic, that would fall into an inventory that, uh, would need to be assessed, uh, within the city and then come up with a plan for property owners or the city or, you know, whoever's, who's responsible those buildings to, to address and having mitigation actions to, to get those things to, to comply and for life safety.
So the city would have to come up with what they would consider that would fall into this category?
There's a, in, in that, in that, in that particular item with a lot of discussion with, um, um, other industries, other building departments and, and with planning and economic, uh, we, we've discussed a lot of things in regards to, one of the big things on that would be to actually get a inventory, a clear inventory of buildings that identify that we may look at a building and feel like it is unreinforced, but it needs to be evaluated and, and put on a list and be able to communicate with the property owners of actions that may need to happen. Not every building, it may have one issue that needs to be addressed. It doesn't mean the entire building needs to be either demolished or completely retrofitted and need to have a, a plan for it. Identify the hazards and, and, and work through that process. That's, I brought that up just as a, it's part of something that we haven't discussed in, in previous mitigation plans. It's a, it's a action item that we need to address and look at and can continue to communicate and, and work out, find programs and funding to, to deal with those situations. No different than, uh, some communities that are prone to flood, uh, building the, um, banking systems or, or other type of mitigations for their, their hazards.
So I, I guess an example that I would think of is, uh, like the Loma Prieta earthquake and at least in the Bay Area, um, they were required, uh, to retrofit certain types of building, mostly masonry-type buildings. Did, did that particular law, uh, cover the entire California or was that just specifically to that area?
Certain, certain areas, there's certain zones, certain, uh, seismic zones required cer- certain levels of protection and, and mitigation for it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Louis. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you very much for that report. I know this type of work is very detailed, very labors, uh, sequencing it properly in order. So I just want to thank you, thank you, sir, uh, for doing this, for the report, uh, for helping to keep, uh, our residents, uh, safe. And I just want to thank you for your commitment to the Fire Department and to our residents. I know this is probably one of your last reports, correct? So I just want to say thank you very much for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. And once again, thanks, Chief. All right. Very good. Lots of work getting done on a daily basis around here. So with that, we have a resolution that we have to consider and we have to entertain a motion and pass it to adopt this multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan. So Cheryl entertain a motion. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Yamas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number Six Four Nine One as read.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Yamas, seconded by Councilmember Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number Six Four Nine One. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to item ten. See, now I got to shut off my microphone. There we go. That's the step I have to learn with this system. Okay. Advisory to public notices. We have three reports tonight. We go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Elms.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So the first item is a tentative parcel map. Uh, this is for seven point five seven acres to be subdivided into three parcels. This is located in the Highway Commercial Zoning District near the northeast corner of Mercy Springs Road and Overland Avenue. This would be right next to the new Seven Eleven and Starbucks. Um, the next item is for a cottage food operation. Um, the operator is Pashino Wedling at four thirteen San Luis Obispo Street. And then the last item is a site plan review for our new police station facility. That would be located at eleven eleven G Street. The public hearings will be held on Wednesday, April twenty seventh at six P. M. here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Move on to item ten, City Manager's Report. Mr. Penaro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hang, there we go. I have to turn your mic on too. Go ahead.
Let everybody know this Saturday at eight thirty at Meadowlands Two is a volunteer event at the Meadowlands Two Park to go help spread some mulch. So if you folks like to go, um, volunteer, uh, Saturday eight thirty, so, uh, please feel free to head on out there and help out beautify our parks. Um, also, I'd like to continue to remind everybody about the Rad Card program that we have here in the city. The city has made some, uh, investments in our, uh, local businesses here, so please, uh, go get the Rad Card, download it, go support your local businesses. It's a exciting thing that this, uh, city has chosen to invest into, so really good. And another thing I always like to mention, folks, is at, at our rec center, there's a lot of activities that are always taking place at our community center. So, uh, if you haven't stopped by the community center, go, uh, pick up a recreation guide. There's, um, all kinds of sporting events and things taking place there, so please head on over there, uh, if you'd like to be engaged, involved and get your kids or family involved in some kind of class of some sort. There's always something going on there. The staff there has done a remarkable job, uh, putting on activities for the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Penaro. Now we go to report on, uh, M C A G. A lot of energy being put into the One Voice Trip. Met with Congressman Costa yesterday. Mr. Penaro and I will both be going out to Washington in a couple, less than a couple of weeks now. I understand you got to put on your walking shoes because you do a lot of walking for a lot of meetings. So this will be my first opportunity out, Mr. Penaro. Looking forward to see if we can bring home some money from the federal government to help us with our projects. Peninsula Clean Energy, we had a big presentation tonight and where things are going there and, uh, with that, uh, solar project, uh, once again, the opt-out period is still in place, uh, but they are providing power now. Measure V Committee, um, I don't have anything new to report from that committee at this time. With that, we'll move on to our city council. Remember, reports, Mr. Yamas? And let me, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I want to thank staff for all the work. I know it was a lot of work putting that P C E presentation together, so thank you very much. I just came out of Easter, so I just hope everybody had a wonderful Easter with their family. One thing that, uh, struck me tonight was that the folks that came talking about the homeless issue over at the, uh, Mobile Home Park. There seems to be expressing quite a bit of distress over there and hopefully, uh, we can come together, uh, resources and, and try to, to provide some relief for them. One thing I will say, I'm, I'm disappointed that, uh, I was not involved with the process of that in, in a formal manner. I think some of these things, uh, could have easily been, uh, anticipated and at least, again, when, when doing projects like this, we, we always, usually we, we ask the input of those concerned. For example, uh, we have a liquor license, we put up public notices, et cetera. It seems like we didn't do any of that in this case and I think that, that's a failure. I mean, there's no other way to put about it. We didn't, uh, interact with the people, as far as I know, uh, to see what their input was. We put this right in the front yard. And again, I, I, there's, there's, there's no excuse for, for dropping this on their lap. So again, hopefully we can, uh, increase communication, uh, and, uh, coordinate a better, uh, response for, uh, for these folks who, again, they, they, uh, they shouldn't have to be experiencing this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. And next is Mr. Jones.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I found out this week that our new digital sign was installed and I did go down and take a look at it and I have to say it is very impressive. Uh, just wanted to let everybody know that it was up and running. Thank you guys for getting that installed. Other than that, thanks, thank you, Council, uh, the staff for, uh, putting together all of our work for tonight. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I failed to mention at our, our last council meeting, uh, that on April ninth, um, uh, this, the Parks and Recreation Staff put on an Easter egg hunt at the Olivera Park, uh, which is in my district and, uh, it was truly successful. Mayor came and one of our, uh, Parks and Recreation Commissioners came and, um, you know, staff had created this bubble machine to put out bubbling suds so that they can plant Easter eggs in the suds, but the wind was so extraordinarily high that day, it just blew right into the wind. I mean, blew the suds in the air and we had all these wonderful cloud, uh, clouds of suds out there. But at the end of the Easter egg hunt, uh, staff brought the machine back out and made these, this big swimming pool full of suds and the kids had a chance to jump in and just really enjoy it. And I was like two seconds from jumping in myself. I really wanted to get in there with them, but, uh, I, I decided to let them have all the joy of being in all those suds. They, they really had a great time. So I, I want to thank Joe Heim and his staff, uh, for a job well done and to all the vendors and service tables that were out there and, uh, to all the people in our community that provided bounce houses and, uh, carved out, um, images for Easter. It was really a, a truly wonderful event and, um, something that I think people have been looking forward to for quite some time since COVID. So we, it, it seemed to me like we had all the children in all of Los Manos out at the park that day. It, it was a lot of fun. The other thing that I, I just wanted to throw out there is that I know the, the city, uh, you know, we're moving towards revising our general plan for future annexations, uh, whether it be residential development or what have you. But we're also, uh, being, to try to be maybe politically correct, uh, asked by the state to be mindful of our water usage and surface water. And so, you know, I just kind of sat back today and, and thought about that and, you know, normally in the past, we've, we've not asked developers to even consider where water is going to come from. The city's all, always taken care of that for them. But I think with the drought that we've been in for so many years now, um, and the state, you know, maybe looking at coming down with more restrictions, um, we, we may want to consider as a city, uh, looking at developers when they're bringing in more residential as to where they're going to get their water from, how they're going to provide that to the city. And, um, it, it shouldn't be on our back altogether. So, uh, that's one thing I'd like to, you know, request our city manager and staff to, to look at moving forward is that when these projects are coming, we're annexing inland, to have, have the developers, um, be able to communicate to the city how they're going to bring water, uh, into Los Manos for the, for the homes that they're building. I don't think we're impacted as much with, with business and industry, uh, depending on what the industry is, but, uh, we're really impacted, uh, with residents because now we have multiple people living in single-family homes. You know, we're, we're pressured to build low, very low and extremely low income housing. So it, it's almost like an oxymoron to me where the state is asking us to do this, but we have these water problems and there's restrictions there as well. So, um, it's, it's, um, it's just a bad position to be in and, and a horrible place to have to, uh, make some tough decisions. So I, for me, I, I kind of want to see that maybe put on the backs of the developers when they come to tell us where's the water going to come from. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, uh, as Ms. Lewis said, we had that Easter, uh, Easter egg, uh, hunt, it was a lot of fun. That's the fun stuff. There's a lot to do in Los Manos. Coming up this week, we have, uh, Saturday night, uh, there is the spring kickoff for the fair, uh, the Los Manos May Day Fair, they have the kickoff dance and that's going to be at the fairgrounds and, uh, at O'Banion, the doors open at six, dinner will be served at seven. And our supervisor, Scott Silvira, will be the auctioneer. And, um, also on, uh, the twenty-third during the day, um, we'll have the Los Manos Chamber of Commerce Street Fair, their spring street fair is running during the day on, on Saturday also. Also Saturday night, I've been asked to, to play, play a little drums with, with some of my old students, so I'll be playing down at Parizo Brewery Saturday night, uh, sitting behind a drum set, pull it out of mothballs from many years ago. And, uh, boy, it feels good to play drums, as you well know, Mr. Penaro. And, uh, so, uh, then, um, also we have, uh, let's see, I had a, at that, at that May Day, and of course, the May Day Fair, the May Day Fair comes back next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then we have, Parade is back on Saturday. So lots to do in Los Manos. Enjoy the good times and the good weather and most of all, the good people. With that, Cheryl entertain a motion to adjourn. And we, we will be going into closed session and we will report out of closed session after the closed session is over. And at this time, then we will entertain the motion to adjourn. Ms. Lewis?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Uh, let me get that button. Mr. Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Mayor Pretend Lambert, to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Carried? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Meeting adjourned at seven nineteen, no, eight nineteen P. M. Got to fix that clock.